I know, especially if it's old halls.
What? Old halls and sunflowers?
Yeah, they move like, it's like walking on water.
God, we retired that first batch.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Beth.
Commissioner Schlangen.
Here.
Commissioner Heinan.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
All right, move on to approval of amendments to the agenda. Monty, do you have anything?
We don't. You just have a revised agenda item form up there from, it's one of Chris's items, but we have nothing to amend.
Okay, thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve our agenda is presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. County board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. County Board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the Board Chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the Board Chair. As we begin today, please turn off your phones or turn them on vibrate. Thank you. Open forum, looks like we have one person here. Just a few ground rules quickly. Purpose of the open forum section of the county board meeting is to allow public input and/or information to be presented to the board that does not require action by the board. Personal attacks of any kind against another person are not allowed. Campaign-type presentations are not allowed. The normal time limit is five minutes per speaker. The time limit may be shortened or extended at the discretion of the Chair. All input or information is to be addressed to the Board of Commissioners and not to members of the audience. Speaker handouts are public information. The county may make copies of such handouts for the public if needed, and the county Board Chair will ensure that the open forum policy is followed. So, Tina, good morning. Could you please come to the podium?
I did bring handouts, would you like them?
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning. My name is Tina and I'm here on a vertical digital board, advertising board to put at Hellman Landscaping, which my husband and I purchased three years ago. And we have been approached by several people to put a digital, uh, advertising board out there. Now, with that being said, my husband and I purchased the company three years ago, and we are trying to grow our business. We bought it from his father-in-law and his, and his father, sorry, his uncle and his father. And we are trying to put a sign up there that would advertise because for the simple fact of what, if you're driving by our place, our sign is so low, so short, and it's, it needs to be replaced. But for us to replace that sign costs between thirty and fifty thousand dollars for us to actually have a sign out there. So we looked at putting our advertisement on other boards that are done by like Lamar Franklin, which is a cost of about four hundred dollars a month. Now, if we put that digital board out there, it's not going to cost us anything because they will run our advertisement for free. So when I called the county, well, first off, I Digital called the county to see if it was possible. We were told that it had to be fifty feet back and that it was probably not going to be possible. If you know where our landscaping is, it's on Highway ten and we have, it would be in the shrubs. So you would not be able to see it. It would be behind Johnson's building or like pretty much in the, in the center of the shrubs. It would not be visible and the I Digital board is not interested in putting that there. With that also being said, we are a seasonal company. We are a landscaping company, so we are also looking for more growth in our company, which a lot of times when we took the business over, our, they had it that we were actually in Nebraska, so people didn't even know where we were located and that they were stone commercial. And so we are looking out to meet more of the residential in the area so we can grow our business, which I know the county board is really big on economical development, is what we would like to do. And so us getting our word out there is, you know, worth a lot. And so we would like to bring in more of the customers. But now with that also being said, Highway ten is heavily traveled, and when people are saying, oh, my gosh, we just drove by that place, they have really nice trees, I wonder what it is. Because when I talked to DOT yesterday, Chuck, who I had a really good discussion with him, for me to tell me, for me to tell where our business was, I had to say, do you know where Sugar Daddy's is? Which, that is how I have to explain it to everyone because our sign is awful. You know, and so with us putting this sign out there also brings in revenue, but it doesn't also bring in revenue for us. It brings in revenue for the county, which I do all of our accounting, so I know what goes in for sales tax and everything else for Benton County. With that also being said, we are now going to be on like, when you go over by Boulder Tap House and those kind of areas, our advertisement will be in those areas also. So people are going to start coming back to us saying like, hey, Hellman Landscaping is on Highway ten, that's super close to us. We can go to their nursery and purchase items, which in turn, you know, brings more revenue into the county. Now, when I, I called into the county after Pat from I Digital called and said, hey, they're, they're saying that it has to be fifty feet, this isn't going to work, that's what we were told. When I called back in, I was told that it probably also not going to work because it has to be fifty feet and that the closest part would be forty-five feet that they would possibly even think about, which I didn't realize that a Board of Adjustments had to come out and look at this. I thought it was you. So I brought it to, I brought it to you guys thinking that this is where I had to come and, and visit. And so when I did my homework and I did call a lot of counties, plus I called the DOT, plus as you can see, I, I've marked them down on my sheet. Most of the counties do not have any rules. They follow DOT rules. And so they can go up to the property line or up to the road right of way. I was told the road right of way in our area was a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty feet. After talking to Chuck yesterday, our area is a hundred feet from the center line to the road right of way. He said, you can go straight up to the road right of way. We normally tell people if they're putting a sign out there to go one foot. So for us to put the digital board out there, you know, again, we would be where our shrubs are. That's not going to do us any good. At that point, I was also told what boards aren't meant to be put on everybody's property, which I understand that, but you know, we're looking to grow our business. Again, in turn, helps the county with income coming in. And again, to me, that's economical growth right there. That also puts money back into the county because now we can take that money, go buy a new vehicle, go buy a new Bobcat, go buy a new, a trailer, and keep that money local and keep it coming into our town. And Bo and I, who is my husband, who is the other owner, who is looking at jobs this morning, is not able to be here. We are really big on supporting local. That is our main focus, support local because local supports you. So, you know, so I'm not, I'm knowing that this, obviously you're not going to make a decision today or whatever. But again, I did call Wabtad County and that is the township, or sorry, township. I did include our taxes on the last page. We are in that township. When I called and talked to Kathy, she said, we follow Benton County rules. And I said, okay, but can I see your ordinance on that? And she said, we have no ordinance. So to me, there is no rules for that township because they have no ordinance. When I called a lot of the other cities, they do have an ordinance and they do follow the ordinance. And so at that point, she said, well, you know, so I said, so basically you're telling me you have no rules. And she said, no, because we have no ordinances. So she couldn't provide anything that they follow the Benton County rules or that they have an ordinance that they follow. This is something that my husband and I would like to do. Again, we are three years into our business. We, we are a seasonal company. We have to figure out how to bring in more revenue. We want to build our business. We have an eighteen-year-old son who will eventually take over our business. But now if we don't keep building, obviously it's not going to work. And as you all know, the, the economy has not been the greatest this year, and so we have taken every single job and went out and bid them. And truthfully, they are a lot of homeowners, but they will say, you know, we didn't even know you guys were located here. We heard from this person that you guys have this business here. And again, it's because we can't put anything out there. So, I mean, if anyone would like to drive by there, we would like to put the sign where our sign is now. That is where the digital board will go. The other property does have a Franklin sign on that. That sign will be going down in 2028 as we will, we can't purchase the property right now because it's in contract with Franklin. Franklin's rules are they have the first right to refusal, which I think is crazy that anyone would sign a contract with them stating that. Now, with that also being said, there's only one ad ran on that billboard, one. And you're paying four hundred and fifty dollars a month for that one ad. How many people seen your ad? Only the people that drive past that ad on Highway ten. Now, on our billboard, you're going to put twenty ads because you can put ten on each side. Ten ads that are going to run for local companies that are going to be in our area that are in county companies. And whether it is St. Cloud, whether it's Sock Rapids, whether, I mean, Benton County is a pretty big county. Whether it's coming from anywhere, you're going to see twenty ads. And according to Pat from I Digital, in that time that you drive by in sixty seconds, or in going sixty miles an hour in eighteen seconds, you will see three ads. So now you've just seen three ads that are running on that billboard. If you're driving by and you're seeing only Franklin or Lamar boards, you're seeing one. So, for example, we wanted to put one by Little Falls. We would like to get into, you know, by, put one down by Little Falls by the split. We want to keep growing our business. That is four hundred and fifty dollars. I can pay for I Digital and do, and it will cost us seven hundred dollars a month and we can go on all I Digital boards. And the cost effective is that's what it's going to be. For a small business like us, for us to go spend thirty to fifty thousand dollars, the recoup on that cost to put a decent sign out there is going to take us years. It's not cost effective. It's, it's really way too much money. And at that point, we're still also going to have to come back and say, you know, can we put that sign out here? I also talked to the City of Foley, Sarah. They are also going through the same issue right now to put a City of Foley sign out that they have to apply for a variance because they have to be fifty feet from the road right of way. Now, and that's, and, and that part of it, we did discuss that it's a city sign. It shouldn't even have to, you know, th- those are crazy rules when you call the, all the other counties around us. The cities are all different because there's residential. You ain't going to put a, a sign in somebody's yard. That's a digital billboard. So those rules are stricter. But like I said, those are, you know, some of my concerns. I did write down the people that I did talk to. I would like this ordinance researched, and I would like to know the outcome if possible and be kept in the loop. Like I said, I did talk to Chuck from DOT. He basically said, he said, there are no rules besides you have to be off the road right of way. And he literally said, you can put it smack dab on the road right of way if you want to. Pat from I Digital said, we don't deal with these rules because we've never had to deal with this rules that you have to be fifty feet. And he said, and at that point, we're not interested. You know, so again, so now we're losing income, you're losing taxes. DOT gets paid for those boards. They have to pay a fee to have those boards up. So in general, we're all losing because the board has to be put back too far. I don't, and that's kind of what I would like to talk to you guys about. And like I said, if you have any questions or anything, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I've left my phone number and my email. And is there any questions that you would have for me?
Anybody?
I guess, I, I think Mr. Johnson and myself have had conversations with you. Mendon is fifty feet from the center line, or a hundred feet from the center.
So our area, he said that every area has a different feet area. And he, when I talked to him yesterday, again, he said, I will drive by your location after I explained to him where it was. He said, but I'm pretty sure you're a hundred feet. He said, if you're not a hundred feet from the center line, then I will call you back. And he said, but at this point, he said, where, you're telling me you're located on that specific area, you're one hundred feet from the center line, and that's where your road right of way would start.
And we're, we're further than that as a county.
So from the road right of way, Benton County's ordinance is fifty feet back, which is, really, to be honest with you, is too far back for really any businesses. Because most of your businesses want to be closer to the highway so they can be seen. You know, and even for us to put a new sign on our, on the building itself is six thousand dollars. You know, so the costs are so high that, like I said, for us to put anything out there would take us years to recoup the cost. And, you know, we're trying to, like I said, we're trying to draw on more business. And if I have to tell everybody, well, we're located next to Sugar Daddy's, they have no clue we're there. Because that's exactly how I have to explain to them where we're at, which is very sad, but that is what it is.
All right. Thank you, Tina. Appreciate the, the paperwork. Let us do some research. Let us have a conversation with staff, and somebody, probably staff, will be getting back to you.
Perfect. Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Thanks, Tina.
All right, we're going to move on. Consent agenda items one through ten.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair. Second.
Motion second to approve consent agenda items one through ten. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull number six for discussion.
Okay. Is that okay with the motion and the second?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna, we have a motion to approve items one through five, seven through ten, and we'll pull six. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Item six, Commissioner Schlangen.
Just looking at the, this budget increases ten percent every year for ten years. Is there any explanation to the high expense or?
Our assessor, Brian Foden, is here. May he come up and address questions?
What was the question?
The, from what I looked through here, it said that it goes up ten thousand, well, it's not, it's ten thousand the first year and then it's even more than ten thousand the next year and increases every year.
Okay, so this is basically ratifying Amendment eight. M triple C has negotiated with Avenue, our CAMA and tax provider, to do that two-year extension so that we have an extension to continue to run on the existing software. This is just, we knew, we knew what the pricing was going in. So this is just ratifying that and saying that we are going to continue on Avenue for 2024. We have not put in 2025. We're going to hold off on that until we see if we need to continue with 2025, once we do the Tyler conversion. And I'm not sure where I'm getting the, the ten thousand increase from, but basically, our CAMA and our tax for next year is roughly a thousand, or a hundred thousand dollars is what we budgeted for in our budget. So that's already been budgeted for. And that's a worst-case scenario. We did go to Avenue and we did try to negotiate with the other counties to make sure that there was a ceiling put in so that we wouldn't be paying more than that hundred thousand total. Because at this point, until it's ratified by all the counties, we don't actually know how many counties are going to be participating in 2024. We have a good idea and I, and I personally believe that it's going to be less than what we budgeted for. I think there's going to be more counties still on the, the Avenue CAMA and tax.
And just to confirm, Brian, these were numbers that we reviewed during the Cow, right?
Correct.
Right now.
Yep, yep. This is exactly, yeah, exactly what was reviewed at the Cow. And, and we, and we budgeted for the worst-case scenario of the, of roughly a hundred thousand for CAMA and tax.
Okay.
The, the chart was on page two, that quarterly price?
The ten thousand one forty-six is what you're looking at?
Yeah.
So, so that's the quarterly price for tax. So in other words, it'd be forty thou- I'll make sure I'm reading the, the correct one here. So that's our quarterly price is ten thousand dollars that was negotiated, and that, that's not an increase. That's just what we're paying for that, for that product quarterly. So the first year in 2024 would be a ten, ten thousand one forty-six. If we do need to keep Avenue for 2025, that quarterly price would go up to eleven thousand one sixty-one. And that's, that's basically every county's quarterly portion. And then there's an optional in year one, but it's not an additional ten thousand dollars. It's just what it costs us to keep the system.
So, and we're planning on changing before those two years?
So, right now, we're scheduled originally for a start time of conversion in March of 2024. It looks like it's been pushed back to April, but yeah, we would start in April of '24, go live in December of '24, and hopefully not need to keep Avenue in 2025. Depending upon timing and the conversion process, who knows if we'll have to do two standalone, you know, systems side by side for another year. But, yeah, I mean, originally, we, we were paying about fifty thousand dollars roughly for CAMA and tax for this year. Next year, the price went up significantly just because the number of counties that are still on the system have dropped dramatically. And what we're trying to do is keep the ceiling at that hundred thousand for next year. And if there is any additional monies needed to continue with Avenue to, to fulfill the contract, they'll be using part of the enhancement fund from the CAMA and tax to pay for that additional amount. I, I don't believe that's going to be a, you know.
You don't think we're going to keep seeing this?
Well, once our conversion's done, we, we'll be, we'll be off of Avenue.
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
Hopefully I answered that.
Hopefully we are going to see the same thing with the next group.
Well, yeah, yeah, hopefully. Thank you. Any more questions?
What would you like to do with it, Commissioner Schlangen?
Go with it for now because we-
Make the motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion second to approve item six on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. All right, we're going to move on to the presentation of nineteen oh-two Benton County Courthouse by Benton County Historical Society Director, Mary Otzby.
Welcome, Mary. The nineteen oh-two courthouse, Mary tells me, that's right. I've been calling it the nineteen oh-three courthouse for twenty years.
Well, she's going to get us corrected.
Exactly.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I don't have much of a formal presentation for you. I just came to answer some questions on the history of the Benton County courthouse and, and we've already been fielding phone calls at the museum about this, you building a new courthouse in, in the old building, which is very common because we are the authority to come to when there's road projects or older buildings that are in question. So this particular courthouse, the original courthouse that you have a picture of on your website of, provided by us, is, was built in nineteen oh-one. It was done by a referendum through the Benton County taxpayers. It was actually done at no cost to local people because it was built by donation, so there was no government cost to it. We've had lots of questions about whether it's a historical building. And at this point, I can honestly assure you that even though there's a lot of history here, we don't classify it as a historical society as a historical building. And the reason for that is, as I went through the newspapers and the information we had on the, at the museum on it, there's been a huge amount of modifications, the most recent one, pretty much largest recent one, about two thousand two, two thousand three. And the building has been modified from its original so much that it doesn't meet the classification to be put on the National Historic Registry. They did look at it at a historical level in the nineteen eighties when it was very common to put, there was a surge, so to speak, to put a lot of the older buildings on the National Historic Registry at that time. Even at that time, it didn't meet the criteria. It had already been modified in the early sixties with the bell tower being pulled down and some of the fireplace chimneys already taken off. So what it originally looked at and what it is today are completely different buildings. And so, again, we've been already fielding the phone calls on them. The Historical Society is of the opinion at this point that it's, it's not worthy of National Historic Registry. I've talked to some of the preservation people in the area who have looked at some of the stuff that I have at the museum. And they also feel that at this point, it's been altered so much that it won't meet the classification of a National Historic Registry. Having said that, can we help put together an application if someone's interested in it? Yes, but my personal opinion of what I've seen in the world is it's not going to, it's not going to happen. There's not enough of the original building left to be able to put it on a National Historic Registry as far as uses. The history of the building itself, there are at least two instances in newspaper articles that the basement has been redone or remodified due to water issues. The tower was taken down in the sixties due to a leakage through the bell tower. And honestly, there were historical documents that were damaged during that time from the conversations I've had with the auditor treasurers over the years. The WPA records for Benton County do not exist because of that. And so, yeah, I will happily ask, you know, entertain any questions and try to answer them to the best of your ability or the best of my ability. But at this point, the Historical Society is not taking a stance that this building is historically significant enough to be salvaged.
Mary, I have one question. So when you say you're fielding calls, is this five calls, fifty calls, five hundred calls? What do you guess?
So, eh, they're...
I mean, I don't-
The first twenty-five came because of the press and the scuttle on the street. The next twenty-five came because there was a memo released about possibly redoing the building. And so I would tell you that every time an old building in Benton County is going to go down, I field phone calls.
Sure.
So you're like, looking at about fifty phone calls of people who are interested. The number one question out of everybody is, this is on the National Historic Registry. And my answer was the same. It is not. And there was a reason why it was not put on in the nineteen eighties. And so, having seen a couple of advanced projects after that, if we didn't put it on in the nineteen eighties and, and support an application in the nineteen eighties, I would be hard past to believe that an application for National Historic Registry would be supported today with the last big project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mary?
Mr. Chair, so, Mary, you're saying that everything's been altered, so that means inside and outside the building, correct? So everything inside too counts?
Right. Over time, with the projects and the newspaper articles that I pulled up on the history, and I, I will send it to anybody who, you know, wants the information, just contact us. In nineteen oh-one, when the building was originally built, by nineteen thirty, they were having water problems and issues in the basement and were already modifying the interior to compensate for that. By nineteen forty, they were doing some exterior work. By nineteen sixty, again, they were having water issues, this time through the bell tower, which was, was damaging and they had to do internal and external modifications because of that. You also had a couple of newspaper articles featuring that every time they modified, they had to handicap access. So elevators were taken out, original staircases were taken out, the vaults were taken out. I mean, there's just isolated references all over the place of the internal and external structure being modified that by the time the eighties came up and we were looking at historical, and mind you, I've been involved with the Historical Society since the early eighties. So I was there when they were putting things on the National Historic Registry. Probably, probably been around too long. But it was not, it was not a choice for our local area of historians to put on, again, because of the, the history of the building and the fact that it had been so modified already by then internally and externally.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Thanks for all the information.
Have a great day.
You too.
You as well. All right, we're going to move on to an update on Nextera Solar Development. I don't know who wants to lead this.
I think Brittany's with us virtually.
Yes.
Hi, everyone.
Good morning, Brittany.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Is that okay like that, Monty? It's sharing.
Thanks a lot, okay. Tim, would you like one?
I don't think you can see Brittany.
I can see the presentation.
All right.
That's good.
Laura's yours.
Morning. Good morning, everyone. My name's Adam Garcia. I'm a senior project manager with Nextera Energy Resources. And I was here back in August, so see some familiar faces, but just wanted to reintroduce myself. Brittany Paxton is transitioning to a different role within the company. So we're, we're in the process of handing off the Benton Solar project while I'll be the lead developer and point of contact going forward. I have her on the call because she's been on this project for over a year now and can answer the, the hard questions if, if I get stumped, so. So today, just want to give a quick update on the Benton Solar project and then also talk a little bit about the phase two of the project. I think it was something that y'all had asked about back in August. All right, so we're still planning for a hundred megawatts of, project for a hundred megawatts in Minden Township. We're expecting to begin construction in May of 2025, and the commercial operation date would be August of 2026. Those dates are still tentative. That's how our current schedule is built out and that's what we're shooting for. So this part, this part of the project is entirely in Minden Township. And the last time we were here, we were talking about using county road right of way for buried collection lines. So one of the biggest updates that we have is since our meeting in August, we have two more landowners who have agreed to have underground collection on their property. So we will not be needing to use county road right of way for our buried collection. We're still interconnecting to GRE's Benton County one fifteen KV substation. We finalized the route with GRE, so there'll be a, a visual representation of that route in a later slide. And we're still ex, in the process of executing that agreement. So it's at the lawyer's hands right now to execute by the end of the month. And then we had a draft PUC application submitted, submitted to the PUC in September. So we've gotten some comments back from them, and good news is it's mostly, you know, formatting and a little bit of language. So we've gotten some comments back from them and good news is it's mostly, you know, formatting and a little bit of, of language here and there. Uh, but no, no major showstoppers from the PUC right now. Uh, so our plan is to submit the final application December twelfth, at which point it will be public information posted on the docket for, for everyone to see. All right, so here's the, the current timeline. So like I said, right now, we're in the, uh, process of submitting the permit to the PUC on December twelfth and then construction in twenty twenty-five and operational in twenty twenty-six. All right, so I just want to share some, some more details that are in the application. Again, this will be public, uh, in about a month. Um, but the project footprint is approximately six hundred acres. Five hundred of those will be covered with solar panels. Um, the six hundred acres includes fencing, uh, around the panels themselves. Um, that includes the land for the substation, uh, lay-down yards, any stormwater basins that we'll need. Um, the fencing around the solar panels will be ten feet in height, so it'll be eight feet of woven wire and then two feet of high tensile straight wire. The purpose of the fencing around the panels is to keep, um, wildlife out from the project. The substation will have six feet of woven wire fencing and then one foot of barbed wire fencing. Fencing around the substations to keep, uh, people from entering into the substation where there is high voltage, so it's a safety concern. Uh, so that's why there's barbed wire on one and not the other. The temporary lay-down yards will be, uh, staging areas for the construction team, so during construction, like, starting in May of twenty twenty-five, that'll be where we're staging materials prior to moving them out to the site. It'll be where the crews congregate in the morning for their safety briefs, uh, and where the, the superintendent will have a trailer at one of those lay-down yards. Uh, for the panels themselves, so, um, they can be up to twenty feet at their highest point. Um, that is, you know, what the application says. However, I would say are the averages that we're expecting for this site based on topography. Um, and the, the general layout of the site will be from ten to twelve feet, so it's not gonna be a field full of twenty-foot panels, uh, for everyone to see. The height is also gonna vary throughout the day, so we're planning to use tracking tech- technology, so in the morning they'll be facing the east and then they'll, they'll rotate with the sun, um, throughout the day. Um, so there'll be dark-colored panels similar to the one that was on the, the very first slide, uh, limiting glare, absorbing all the light that we can. Um, should have less than two percent glare, uh, off the panels. And we'll have over two hundred fifty thousand panels and over three thousand racks. This is a, a very basic, um, view of what the, the panels and rack setup looks like. Uh, all these dimensions are subject to change, so we don't actually order the panels or finalize the technology that we're gonna use until we get closer to construction. Uh, technology is changing all the time. We want, you know, the most, to date, the, the best, uh, that we can get. So we're not gonna actually place that order until, uh, later next year. All right, so this is our, uh, transmission route that we have with, um, GRE. So the transmission line is in, located entirely on GRE's property. Um, so it's point eight-five miles long. Uh, the pole heights will be, again, have, will be finalized closer to construction, but will not exceed between seventy to a hundred and fifteen feet in height. And in orange is the, the corridor and then green is our, uh, is the route that we'll be using there. All right, so this is also, uh, will be in the application. This is the project footprint, which includes panels, um, buried collection, the substation, and then it has a zoomed-in version of the, the T-line route that we just showed.
Adam, if I could interrupt you quick, where, where are you talking about the new locations for the collection lines?
Um, so one of them will be on, go down here if that helps, um, the Zormire property here, so that, last time we were talking Highway twenty-five, or, uh, County Road twenty-five, for buried collections, that'll actually be in the property here.
Okay.
And then the other one is towards the.
Towards the middle, Adam.
Yeah.
And we're still in negotiations with them.
Okay.
North, but we have positive feedback and our agreements are with our attorneys right now.
All right, thank you.
Just north of the vector area, yes.
All right, so, um, even though this is a, a state-level permit that we're submitting, right, we obviously, um, you know, we wanna work with the county and have, have your buy-in as well. Um, so there are, uh, I was talking to Brittany right before this meeting and we may not need a conditional use permit for the substation and the lay-down yards. Uh, however, that is something that we are, you know, very willing to, to apply for if that's, if that's what you all desire and that's the best way to, to go forward with that. Um, and we'll, we'll continue to work with that once the, the state application is in. Um, for road use agreements, so even though we're not, you know, having buried collection in the, the county road, um, we are gonna still analyze for any potential road upgrades that may be needed. Uh, we don't know exactly which ones will be required. That's gonna be, again, closer to construction. We have a more finalized site plan. But what we're gonna do is do aerial surveys of the routes that we're planning to bring the equipment, um, to make sure that the turn radius on the roads works for, for the route that we're planning. Um, and then also do some geotech studies to make sure that the integrity of the road can handle the weight of the trucks and the equipment that we're moving through. Uh, if we need to make any improvements for either of those cases, right, we'll work directly with the county and the entire improvement will be on our dime. All right, so here's a, uh, overview of the, the timeline once we actually submit the permit. So like I mentioned, we're targeting December twelfth for our final application. Um, before that, there'll be a pre-submital notice that will go out, so the, the commission will, will get a notice that we are filing, filing, um, this permit with the state in ten days' time. After, uh, the state reviews it, they'll have a, uh, a comment period or public's, public information and scope, scoping comment period from April to October of next year. And we're, uh, planning to have a public hearing, uh, at the state level in November of twenty twenty-four.
So your EA issued environmental assessment?
Yes.
Okay.
Then, fingers crossed.
And they'll be, they'll be meeting. Go ahead.
I would say fingers crossed everything goes well. We'll have a positive decision from the PUC, March of twenty twenty-five, uh, with the notice to proceed, uh, the following months. We can get construction going in May. Go ahead, Brittany.
Yeah, a lot of the things that are gonna happen through April to October and different meetings that we'll have to have, whether it's county, state, there's a long list of requirements that the state has to terminate in, in Minnesota. But one of the bigger things that happens during that timeframe is we'll get comments back from the Department of Commerce that we have to address within a certain amount of time, so whether they have clarified questions on the application, et cetera. So that's why that timeframe seems a little bit long. Uh, we also buffered it a little bit just to make sure that we had enough load in our schedule to go beyond time. So, a lot of different things happen during that timeframe.
Thank you.
All right, were there any questions on Benton one before I dive into Benton two real quick? I only have a few slides on this one.
Any questions on phase one?
Mm-mm.
All right.
Awesome. All right, so for Benton two, uh, we're targeting a, a commercial operation date of tw- of twenty twenty-eight. Um, a lot of that timeline is being driven by the, uh, MISO interconnect queue position that we have, so we submitted for the study last year. It takes about two years. So we get, should get those results back in twenty twenty-four. And then it would follow the exact same timeline as Benton one, just on a two-year lag. So even though we, you know, we've been, you know, involved in the community for a while now, that's not gonna stop, even though we have one project, um, go operational, right? We wanna continue that outreach through, uh, the entire timeline of Benton two. So continuing to present at meetings like this, continuing to, uh, engage with the community and, uh, if there are any opportunities for sponsorships, my, um, content information is at the end of this and we would love to, to give back to the community in any way that we can over the next couple of years. So in terms of where we're at for, for Benton two, right now, we're still, uh, working on, um, the land part of the project, so we're engaging landowners to make sure we can actually have a good contiguous, area that we can put another hundred megawatts of solar. Uh, we're also doing some environmental and cultural studies, so that has been primarily desktop studies, so looking through, you know, Google Earth and other applications on, uh, potential, you know, wetlands, animal habitats and things like that that could be potential showstoppers. Um, right now, we've had no red flags on the desktop side and our plan in the spring would be to go in, uh, and do some fieldwork to verify that, that that is the case. And the same thing on the cultural side, so it's been desktop right now and then in spring of twenty twenty-four will be the, the field surveys from, uh, State Historic Preservation Office. All right, and, uh, that's all I had for Benton two as well.
All right, Adam or Brittany, I, so is it reasonable to say that spring of twenty-four would be the very, very earliest you'd be able to provide any type of preliminary mapping on phase two?
I think so. Um, it would probably, it, it depends on, um, really the conversations that were happening with the landowners and how that, how that shakes out.
Okay. Yeah, I think obviously from our.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Obviously, from our perspective, the sooner we can see that, the better.
Yep.
Um, I, and understanding it's preliminary.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Of course.
Okay. Awesome. Any questions for Adam or Brittany?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Binsky.
What, uh, just for the public, what, what is the cost of this entire project? For Benton one and then two potentially?
Uh, Brittany, do you have the capex off your head?
Yep, for Benton, for Benton one, it's about a hundred and eighty million total. Um, and then Benton two, we're still working out logistics, but since the same amount of megawatts, I would assume it's probably gonna come out to be about the same.
And then, Mr. Chair, are you, or Adam, are you staying locally or are you traveling back and forth?
Uh, so I'm traveling, so I am, I'm based out of Florida, but I've been up here, um, a lot. I know Brittany says she's half-Minnesotan at this point. Not quite there yet, but, but I'm working on it.
And, and Brittany, just, uh,
I.
for clarification and fairness to you, I know you've been very available to the county board when we've got questions. Do you want us to move forward with Adam or where would you like to have this at so we're not chasing you down when we shouldn't be?
I know, I hate, I hate to pass the time, but I did mention to you, I'm, I'm having another baby soon, so not gonna be able to be on the road as much, but yes, Adam will be since we've moved forward, point of contact for both, I'm still at the company. Um, so Adam and I actually sit pretty close together, so I'll still be here adding needs for the project, but moving forward, Adam should be your go-to.
All right, very good. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Shulman.
Which roads are you looking at for using during construction?
Um, so the actual route that we've used has not been finalized. That'll kind of depend on where we put the lay-down yards. Um, so that will be in the public, um, in the application when it's filed, the locations of the lay-down yards. Um, but in terms of finalizing the route, that's not something that we're looking to just yet. But happy to, to provide the information as soon as we can.
Any other questions for Adam or Brittany?
No, I guess I, I just, as we could move forward with these, this is the second one that I've been involved with. The timeframe is so slow. I mean, I, you can't believe that it can take this much time to get something going, you know, that we're, I mean, it's well-vented. But my God, can't we, can't the UC or somebody speed this up a little bit for these people? I mean, you, you gotta tremendous amount of cost invested before you ever get the permit.
Yep.
So it's something.
Welcome to the government.
Yeah, but I mean, it's just.
Welcome to Minnesota.
Yeah, it's basically a welcome to Minnesota.
Yeah. It's something we, we have our internal legal teams that, you know, we try to work with the, the PUC and try to push them as fast as we can, but, um, you know, it's just how things have been done in Minnesota for a long time. So thankfully, we've been around, we know the process and unfortunately, sometimes it just stays super locked, but I am, I am confident that hopefully moving forward in the next couple of years with all of the renewable energy goals, that the process should clean up a little bit and hopefully get expedited in some capacity.
Keep working on that, Brittany. All right, any other questions for Adam or Brittany? Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Appreciate the update. Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you all. Talk soon.
All right, can move on to an update on Eagleview Commons Community Septic Upgrade Replacement and Discussion on Properties Refinancing, Roxanne.
Um, okay, good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Um, just wanted to give you a brief update that, uh, the HOA is anticipating that the design will be submitted to the PCA around November fifteenth or so, next week and a half, two weeks. Um, there is, they can take up to six months to, um, approve those permits. So assuming all goes as, as planned, hopefully, early next spring, they'll start construction on the replacement of the septic system. Um, that being said, we now have the liens recorded against all of these properties. And with a lien being recorded against a property, that plays into refinancing, um, issues. And so this is one of those things that we did not anticipate happening so soon. Um, but we have a number of property owners who are refinancing, whether it be for a second mortgage, taking out a home equity loan. I, apparently HELOC loans are what a lot of people are looking into right now. Um, and so the banks are requiring that the liens be paid off prior to them issuing these lines of credit. Um, and so that means we've got a couple of property owners that are prepaying the assessment. So I'm, I, I've now, uh, created a new agreement that is a prepayment. Then they pay up, they give us that money, we set it aside in an escrow account, and then they have to sign a second agreement with us that states, if the project goes over the cost that you've prepaid, you are now responsible for those funds. Just so that we're not, um, left out in the cold in the event that it's more than that. Um, we did have one bank ask us about a subordination agreement. That subordination agreement would put our lien second to the mortgage, which could be a concern if these properties go into foreclosure. Now, we're left holding those, um, those, responsible for those funds until such time that somebody's able to pay those. So my, my, I, I mentioned to the bank that I would discuss that with the board. Um, there's a significant risk in doing a subordination agreement, um, in speaking with the attorney's office. It's not advisable to do that. Um, so we have not officially been asked to do that, but I just wanted to get the board's take to make sure that that's not something they're interested in. Um, for now, they're doing a prepayment. We're getting that money upfront, ensuring that the cost of this project is paid for.
Any comments on that? That I'm not interested in.
No.
No.
Mr. Chair, I, I have to agree with you. I'm not interested in this. I mean, they approached us about this project. We assist, assisted in help.
Right.
We're not gonna be put on the hook for this, in my opinion.
I think you've got consensus on that, Roxanne.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware that, uh, this is what's occurring and, and back when we had discussed how much staff time is this project gonna take? These are unexpected items that are coming up that is taking a lot of staff time, a lot of communication back and forth with property owners, new agreements, recording documents, recording second documents. Um, again, uh, unexpected costs are associated with this project.
If I recall, we have thirty-plus parcels here we're dealing with?
Forty.
Forty?
Yeah. Yep.
Any update on where the system's at today as far as it's working, it's not working?
Wait, I, you know, I mean, I, I don't thi- it's not compliant, but it's not imminent, it's not an imminent health, uh, threat to public health.
Okay.
So, it's just, they're trying to get ahead of that before it were to get to that level.
All right. Any other questions for Roxanne on the update?
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to the Human Services Board Chair, Commissioner Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll now call the Human Si- Human Services Board to order. Approve or amend the agenda. Sandy, you got anything to add to the agenda?
I do not.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, item one. What do you wanna do with that?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Thank you. Sandy, first one, consider resolution to accept a donation from Health Partners to Benton County Public Health Human Services.
I'll have Jaclyn address the next two issues.
Thank you. Good morning, Jaclyn.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I just have two quick items, um, this first and second one. Um, both of these funds would be used to really help support our efforts in community, um, and helping us to provide some basic care items to our school partners, child protection, foster care, um, some of our community partners as well. Um, the first one, um, that you have there is the Health Partners Resolution. And so Health Partners is looking to provide a gift card to Benton County Public Health in the amount of five hundred dollars. And so just here asking that the board adopt a resolution for us to be able to accept those funds.
Move for approval of that.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? Now they'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next one.
And then the second item, um, today is for the board to consider Benton County Public Health to submit an application to Medica. Um, we have an opportunity to apply for funds from Medica in the amount of five thousand dollars. Also, again, aimed at improving the quality of life for the individuals that we serve. Um, so again, just asking that the board approve staff to submit an application to Medica in the amount of five thousand dollars.
So move, Mr. Chair. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jaclyn.
Thank you.
Next one, Sandy.
Um, so the next one is, um, to accept, um, the state's Children's Mental Health and Juvenile Justice Screening Grant of fifty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Um, however, I will note that we get this grant every year. Uh, we are unable to spend the great majority of it because of the restrictions used on this, and this is a statewide issue. Um, this is a screening grant for all of our child protection workers, children going into placement. They screen a child going into placement, um, for mental. They screen a child going into placement for mental health issues. And we can use the money if the screening shows that they have mental health issues, they don't have insurance, and et cetera. Well, as soon as a child goes into placement, they go on medical assistance. It doesn't really result in a lot of use of the money. But we accept it, we usually end up spending a couple hundred dollars of it, maybe a thousand. But just to make you aware that this is not something in the statewide we are able to use very well.
Commissioner Pop.
So does it go back to the state then?
Correct.
And many counties send money back, unfortunately. What would you like to do with this?
You suggest that we accept it?
We accept it. We're required to do the work anyways. Some money may get used, so yes, I would say accept it, but we struggle every year to spend it.
Okay.
I'll move to accept.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Sandy?
No, I do not have anything.
Thank you very much. Right now, we're adjourned at nine fifty. I'll turn it back over to the Board Chair.
All right, we're going to move into appointing a county board representative to St. Cloud Regional Homeless Task Force, Monte.
Mr. Chair, of course, if you've heard, the task force has reconvened and wishes that counties and cities and providers would designate representatives to it. I received an email yesterday from Matt Staling. Matt is the city administrator for the city of St. Cloud. He tells me that the city has appointed Pastor Carol, Place of Hope, Denise Vale from Dallas Place, and the new lieutenant from the Salvation Army in St. Cloud. He says the task force intends to meet again in the, quote, "next couple of weeks." And he asked us that we notify him as to who our representative might be so he can begin developing a contact list. So if the board is so inclined, I would recommend you amongst your members, select a representative to this homeless task force.
My understanding after conversations with the mayor is that there would not be any elected officials on this task force. Is that correct, Sandy, from your rec?
I was not at that meeting, but that is my understanding as well.
Right, okay.
Matt, Matt does not say that. You know, Mr. Chair, I look at it this way, you know, they've asked us to send a representative. I don't feel that they're in a position to dictate who we send. I felt that about any group that we're involved in. In other words, you want a representative from our county, you can't tell us who to send. I think that is our decision.
I would agree. I'm just saying the conversation was that, to the way I understood it, there would be no public officials on the task force from any of the three counties.
That's my editorial opinion, and if you want, of course, follow what the mayor or whoever said, please do, but that's just my opinion.
What's your thoughts?
Part of me agrees with you and part of me agrees with Monte. You know, we'd probably get a little more insight if we have a appointed from the board, but if that's the route they're going to go, I don't know.
And Matt's, again, Matt is the city administrator for the city of St. Cloud. He does not say in his email to me that it must be a non-elected official.
Well, I guess I'd look at it this way, too, is that if we appoint a non-county board member, we could always change it, right? I mean, if it's not working out, we can reappoint.
You can always change it.
So, Mr. Chair, I would recommend you support and put an alternate.
Well, how did, Mr. Chair, how did the city of St. Cloud get three to this table, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And Benton County's getting one.
Right. My understanding, each county's getting one.
And more than likely, it's going to be located in Benton, you know, a lot of that's going to happen in Benton County. That just don't make sense.
Mr. Chair, when you talked to Mayor Kleiss, what was his recommendations?
Well, again, my understanding from the conversation was there would be no elected officials on this task force.
Okay.
And that they were going to try to have the private sector involved and nonprofits leading this.
Well, evidently, they did that.
So. Any thoughts? I mean, we've had conversations. Nikki Knowles has been here. She's represented a lot of that already. I guess my thought process is we would potentially appoint Nikki. I'm open to an alternate, and if the alternate's a county board member, so be it.
I would nominate Mr. Heinen.
As the alternate?
So Nikki Knowles as the first?
I'll make that a motion.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, so the motion would be Nikki Knowles as the task force representative with Commissioner Heinen as the alternate?
Yep.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Okay, second. Any other discussion on that?
Mr. Chair, I would like to see Benton County, because a lot of it does affect our east side. I'd like to see Benton County have a little bit more representation on that board, too.
I would hope talking to Nikki, she could explain we would like two people on that board.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Thank you. We'll discuss the process to appoint a Benton County representative to St. Cloud Regional Airport Authority.
So as I noted in my agenda, Mr. Chair, Mayor Kurt Hunstiger will be leaving the Airport Authority Board at the end of this year. I understand he's kind of moving a bit into retirement and letting go of some obligations, commitments. We definitely thank him for his service on the Airport Authority. We heard lots of good things about his service on the Airport Authority. So again, asking the board is, do you have someone in mind that might be a good candidate? If you do, it wouldn't be necessary perhaps to have a recruitment, advertise, and so on and so forth. I'm just curious to know what thoughts you have on this subject.
So when we went through this, I think me and Commissioner Heinen were the only ones on the board at that time. And we had a clear-cut first choice, and our second choice was pretty much a dead heat between who and, you know, and what. And we chose Mayor Huntinger because of his ability with the financial deals, but I think they're up and rolling for that now. I guess if the person that was second or tied with Mr. Huntinger was still in favor of doing that, that would eliminate a recruitment. And we could just go with that. I don't know if he would be at this time.
I was going to say, have you had any discussion?
No, I haven't.
I've already had discussions with three other people.
Okay.
I've talked to, and one said that they would be very interested in this.
Okay. I know that person had an extreme amount of knowledge with the airport.
Yep.
Would it be appropriate, Monte, if Commissioner Pop and Commissioner Heinen had a discussion and brought forth a recommendation to us at our next meeting?
I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Right, we do that?
Yep, that'd be fine. We can come to a consensus.
We'll move this on to our next agenda then on the twenty-first.
Sure, okay, bring it back for possible. Yeah, and just to note again, the individual will be serving out the remainder of Mayor Hunstiger's term through June of twenty-six, ineligible for two additional three-year terms.
All right, so Commissioner Pop and Commissioner Heinen can bring us back.
We have possible action on your next board agenda.
Yes.
Great.
All right, all right, going to move on to County Administrator's Report.
Just very quickly, I want to let you know that I submitted a couple of applications for county achievement awards. You know, these are the awards that are presented at the AMC Annual Conference during the awards banquet. Submitted for the public health tobacco ordinance, the one where the board prohibited the sale of the flavored vaping products. And it was also recognized in Denver at the national conference. Submitted that one, and also then submitted our broadband project, our rural broadband project for possible recognition. So got those in a couple of weeks ago, just under the deadline. So we'll see what happens, though. I wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Those were submitted. George, I'd like to invite George to, if he could, to present the resolution on the nickel Operation Green Light. Maybe just talk a bit about vehicle services. All yours, George.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So just a couple of words. Operation Green Light is relatively new. It started in New York State a couple of years ago, and it's gone nationwide. And it's supported, the purpose is to shine a light, thank veterans for their service in the past. And it's pretty straightforward. We put green lights up to illuminate certain things. National Association of Counties supports it, AMC supports it, National Association of County Veteran Service Officers support it. And I would like to applaud our property management folks who have a unique way to pick green. Some of the lights, they put plastic around, which is really efficient and easy to take down later.
Okay.
So a very simple thing we can do as a county, and I think it's probably going to be, just about every county in the United States will be doing it.
Right.
Any questions?
Nope, I guess the comment was that, you know, on the AMC board, I don't think we had any counties that were represented that weren't doing it. Everybody, the Veterans Service, and you got a new president or new chair?
We, for Minnesota Association of County Veteran Service Officers, we hired a new executive director.
Yeah, and so they'll have a little more insight, but it sounded like it was pretty much statewide.
Yeah, and this executive director we hired is just outstanding. He's an attorney, taught classes at St. Cloud State. And he had his own private practice with his wife, and they focused, and their whole purpose was veteran issues. So he's going to be dynamite for us.
Great. Before, I'm actually going to move on this, but thank you for your service, George, and anyone else that's in the room that I'm not aware of. Thank you, appreciate, appreciate everything you've done. I am going to move to support the resolution for Operation Green Light for our veterans.
I'm second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that resolution. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. Lastly, human services succession planning. After I did this, occurred to me, well, the board still has a lot of discussion that needs to occur on the subject of the public health organization and where it sits. Is it on its own? Is it part of human services? And that has a significant bearing upon this recruitment. What are you recruiting for? A social service director or a combined? So I would suggest we table this and bring it back at your next board. I mean, you've got to commit the hole in a fourteenth to talk about this subject, and maybe at that point, we'll have some more clarity on where that issue's going.
Great, thank you.
Table this for today. Thank you.
All right.
Yep.
Chris, we're going to move on. Consider an application for easement across state lands.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Allow me a few moments to bring this up on the screen. So as you know, we are well into the design of County Road Seven. To reconstruct that, we do need additional highway easement. And we do cross two parcels that are owned by the Minnesota DNR. And I'll bring up a parcel sketch of those. Let's see if I can zoom out a little bit. Maybe I won't be able to. But there's this long parcel that's identified in our road, right-of-way plat, it's parcel fourteen. And actually, this little square here is on the next parcel sketch is DNR property as well. So to facilitate reconstruction of two twelve-foot lanes and a wide shoulder and a safe shoulder slope, we need to get to sixty-foot right-of-way, which is this purple line here, as you can see, on these parcel sketches. So that would be an additional twenty-seven feet. This is a wildlife management area known as Bible's Slough. So there is a process through the state of Minnesota, DNR, and it's to complete this application to get additional easement across their land. So we've initiated that. There is some fees associated with that. There's a two thousand dollar application fee just to apply to get the easement, plus the appraised value of that land as well, which we hired an appraiser. And so we're anticipating probably total forty-five hundred to five thousand dollars for that easement. I'm hoping that there's not a lot of argument between the DNR and us on what the value of that land is. And then third, they do need a resolution adopted by the board to accompany the application. So in the packet, I had prepared this resolution. And sure enough, as soon as I turned in my agenda items, the DNR sends us a sample resolution of what they'd like to see all stated in that. In that. So I want to bring that up now. It has a couple additional statements in there that, and I have a copy here that I will leave for a sign. But basically, it just says in the whereas that we need to reconstruct County Road Seven and bring it up to current roadway and design standards. And to do that, we need additional highway easement. Additional highway easement is needed over DNR-owned land. There is a brief description of the parcels, and these are the same descriptions that are used in the application. There it is, that the state of Minnesota requires a completed application along with the two thousand dollar application fee, and then in this resolution. And then upon approving the application, it says the state of Minnesota will determine the market value of the easement and charge an easement fee before the document is sent to the county. Like I said, we had already hired an appraiser to evaluate all the parcels along this stretch, including this one. So we know what our appraiser says fair market value is for that parcel. I'm hoping we don't get into a big battle with DNR over what that value is. But as it continues, now therefore be it resolved that Benton County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize acquiring additional highway easement for the construction of the project. Be it further resolved that Chris Bird or his designee is authorized to complete the application process to acquire additional easements from the Minnesota DNR and authorized to pay fees associated with acquiring said easements and draw from the road and bridge account from which other similar payments are made. So there's a summary of that. Here for questions?
Isn't it nice working with other government entities? Go ahead, Commissioner Heinen.
So as you're reading this, Chris, what I'm understanding is we have no say of what the value is going to be of this. The state is going to dictate?
Maybe. We've heard, because of course, when things like this, we reach out to our neighbors and friends in other counties to see, and the experience varies. And maybe I'll just point out that why that experience varies is because the state is divided into different regions. We're in the central region out of the St. Paul office. Sometimes that experience varies from region to region. Sometimes it's a pleasant experience and there's no issues, and other times, there's a difference in value. So, yeah, it does sound like the state will just have their say, and we may be subject to whatever that is. But I think our inclination is if they come back with a value that's significantly higher than what our appraiser says, we're at a staff level, we're going to try to push back on that. And because it's, one way or another, it's taxpayer money, so.
But if we adopt their resolution that they want, then we're on the hook of what they say it's going to be.
I guess, yeah, the resolution language that they provided us does say that, yeah, we'll pay their fee.
Commissioner. Mr. Chair, Chris, is there a bank? Is there any available bank in this region? You know, some of them are negative across the state for wetlands.
So a good question. So this is, interestingly enough, this is independent of wetlands.
Oh.
So this is just to acquire an easement over the land. We're still subject to mitigate for any wetlands that we impact on those lands, which is additional fees and costs. So that's a different conversation than what we're having today.
And Chris, this is according to your agenda item, this is levy money that the federal dollars that are coming in on CASA seven, they're not going to help cover.
Correct, because the federal money cannot be used to acquire right-of-way.
Okay, wow.
But, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Pop.
So we want the project to move forward, and if we don't agree to the DNR's language, we'll probably hold it up, right?
Yeah, we're going to still push, we, there's things that we can do that are less than ideal. We will have to widen the roadway one way or another. In our back pocket, I mean, it's still a safety hazard. Do we consider looking at putting guardrail across this? Of course, that's additional expense to the project now where we wouldn't have it. We still have to do additional grading to provide for width to put up guardrail. We don't have the width even today to pound in guardrail posts there. And even, there's minimum slopes behind the guardrail that you have to maintain. Because if you can imagine, a guardrail is meant to crumple up, and you just can't have a steep drop-off right behind the guardrail, or it's ineffective. So those are things that we don't want to go, because then that's increased maintenance cost on us forever in the future, along with increased construction costs, so.
Commissioner Bensky.
Chris, just thinking outside the box here, what, do you got any contacts at the DNR that might be able to give you a range and what this might go for? That way, if we maybe kick the can a little bit down the road on this resolution for a meeting, we can find out if we're in the same, because it would be bad if all of a sudden we came back and we're thinking it's twenty-five hundred bucks, and they're saying it's twenty thousand.
Yeah, no, they have not been able to tell us what they think it is. In fact, I think in one of the conversations they had with Lloyd Alt, they said that they don't have a clue what it's valued at. So since we have data and they don't, you would like to think that we have the upper hand, but.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Chris, I really think we have to come to some agreement with the DNR of what this is worth before I'm comfortable signing this resolution, or I'm sorry, of the chair signing this resolution. We need some more information.
Chris, with that, where timeline-wise, I mean, if this gets tabled for some reason, or, I mean, what's this doing with the project?
Well, yeah, it's a complicated matter. So we're in the St. Paul region. This person, Martha Vickery, has informed us that they are retiring in December, and the state is not planning on refilling their position. So that's a concern of ours. If that workload- So that's a concern of ours. If that workload that this person is now maintaining falls to one of these other regions, is it no longer a priority, and then it could hold up the project? And I understand the concern with not knowing the fee, but they've kind of pretty much told us they're not even gonna consider the cost of that or value of that until we've send in this application process, because that's, that's the state process, that's the state procedure, that's what staff's trained on, is not even look at that until they receive this application.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
It, it just seems absolutely weird that they make you basically enter into an agreement with them, and we don't even know what the agreement we're entering into for financial risk.
And in fairness, just so I understand, you're talking about levy dollars. Of course, it's all taxpayer dollars, but levy dollars, what, is it CASA dollars?
No, and it was not anticipated to use CASA dollars for this.
So it's all local?
Yeah.
Dollars? On a CASA road?
Correct, it's, yeah.
Okay.
I guess I really don't wanna hold up the project for, I, I think we can always re, can we always reject later after, you know, we agree, we go into the agreement, and the price is astronomically insane, we can.
Well, I think from our perspective, we know two thousand dollars. They're not even gonna consider giving us an easement until we pay them two thousand dollars. If at some point we get to a disagreement of, on the value of what that easement is, then, then maybe that's, we, we bring something back to the board and say, well, let's explore alternative options, because every other parcel along that stretch is signed, and, and we reached agreements except for the DNR. So I would recommend at least going forward with this step, and before we actually pay any additional fees for the actual value of the easement, we'll bring something back to the board for consideration.
All right. I would support that.
I would support that, too.
You wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion, and I'll second it.
Motion second on the floor for that application. Any other discussion?
As long as we got Chris bringing it back to us.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Right, consider the professional services agreement with a consultant for final design at CASA twenty-nine and CASA one roundabout, Chris.
Yeah, so I apologize. I intended for this to be a consent item, but this was a, an agreement that we had discussed at last meeting. The board authorized entering into negotiations with our consultant, Stone Brook Engineering, which we did. We had some back and forth, and we got to terms that our attorney's office and, and their side agreed to. So I bring forward with you a signed contract signed by the vendor, just asking for authorization for board chair to sign this contract to design the roundabout at CASA twenty-nine and CASA one.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Commissioner.
Um, on page five, on the third paragraph, the bottom line, well, it says that counties shall make full payment for services within thirty days of receipt, and it put thirty-five in the middle.
Oh, page five, uh, last paragraph. Oh, is it still off?
I believe she's referencing, the invoices are typically due in thirty, but I think by statute, they have to be paid thirty-five.
Correct, I think, yeah. Michelle, that's, that's statute language. We have thirty-five days to pay invoices.
Yeah, we have, however, agreed to thirty, but it looks like there's some inconsistency, so it should either be thirty-five or thirty. So we can make that change.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they did sign that with that in there. We haven't. Oh, this is not the signed one. In your packet should have the signed agreement in there, so.
So, Michelle, thirty-five?
Yep, we'll go back to them, and we'll get them to initial the contract after, after you guys sign it.
Yep.
And we'll see what they agree to, but thirty-five is typically what we require.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay with that?
Yep.
All right, so what are your wishes?
Call the question.
We don't have a motion yet.
Oh, yeah, we did.
No, we don't.
Oh, no.
Motion to authorize board chair to sign on the consultant contract.
Thirty-five?
With the, with the noted changes for thirty-five.
I'll second that.
All right, motion of second on this contract submission. Approve the board chair to sign. Any other questions?
Is this a schedule for next year's work, right?
No, this is actually twenty twenty-five work. That's when we received the federal money for this, this intersection.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Move on to considering the IIJA Technical Assistant Grant.
Commissioner, I feel like I should clarify. So the construction work will happen in twenty-five, but design work shall happen, start happening immediately. So, but with the bulk of it being in twenty twenty-four.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the IIJA Technical Assistant Grant, Chris.
All right, as the board is aware, you know, last year, we applied for this federal RACE grant to see if we can get some funding for this Mayhew Lake Road project. We were unsuccessful in that, but it seemed like the desire and the consensus was to try again. Those RACE grants are federal grants that are open directly to local agencies like us. The grant application process is rather complicated. Fortunately for us, the state recognized this, and in this last legislative session, they made some money available specifically for local governments to apply for this grant, but the grant has to be used to hire a consultant that will help you apply for these grants. So since we were already wanting to apply for a RACE grant again, we applied for it, and the maximum award amount was thirty thousand dollars. We did receive that grant. Once we received that notification, we had to go back to our consultants and have them put together a scope and a fee for helping us apply for that. Their scope comes out to be about twenty thousand dollars, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, so just under the maximum grant award amount. The next step for us would be to enter into this agreement with MINDOT so we can receive this grant. Couple of things. The money can only be used to apply for the, the RACE grant, and only costs incurred after this, this award letter that we received are eligible. So that's something, there it is, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars. So only costs after, incurred after October twenty-fifth are eligible. It's a reimbursement process, so we will pay the invoices to the consultant first, and then we'll have to apply to the state to, to get reimbursed for, for those costs, but hundred percent of the cost up to twenty-nine thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars will be reimbursed by the grant.
Great.
Great.
Yes. Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Pizzi.
Thank you for applying for this. As we all know, we were gonna go back and apply, because all the, the heavy lifting work was already done.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was just updating this, and, and I think it's a, now, now the, now we don't have any out-of-pocket for reapplying, so.
And, and Mr. Chair, from what you hear from the RACE grants, it takes up to ten times you have to apply before you get them, so I think that, you know, if we don't keep applying, you're not gonna get anything, and, you know, it's not gonna happen in one, it's not gonna happen in two. I mean, everybody you talk to about RACE grants, it's a long, long process.
Mr. Chair, if we have to keep applying ten times, I'm hoping the state keeps giving us money every year. Because we will not be able to afford it.
What are your wishes?
I will move approval.
I'm second.
Okay. Motion second to move approval of the Technical Assistant Grant. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Thank you, Chris. Members, in sake of time, what's your thoughts about moving past our updates so we can keep moving? Are you okay with that?
Moving forward.
All right. Monty, when you're ready, setting committee holes. I would like to add one item when we're talking about setting meetings. If we could set our next county township meeting that we had, I believe, last May, trying to remember the date, but we had talked about having maybe a semi-annual meeting with our, our townships and our cities.
Yep.
So we'd like to set another, set another one to follow that up, so. We'll add that on your list.
Sure, you wanna do that today?
Please, let's set the date today.
Well, I guess you wanna throw out what you, what you think works best.
Thoughts?
Well, let's start out with a month. What month were you thinking?
It's getting pretty late in November.
Yeah, I, I think November's, I'm sorry, out of the question, in my opinion.
Okay.
Because of the dates.
December dates?
Early December, and we, you know, we know, we got AMC, third, fourth, fifth, sixth.
Do you recall, did we meet on a Monday or Thursday evening?
We were meeting Thursday evening that week, December seventh.
Right, but I'm, our last township-city meeting, I'm trying to recall, I believe it was a Thursday evening, but.
I, I don't recall myself. I don't remember either.
I had a township person just said it was a Thursday.
Yeah, okay, December eleventh. How does that look? Monday evening, December eleventh?
Monday.
Well, the fourteenth, we've planned a commission.
I think, you know, a lot of the townships meet one, Monday, Wednesday, so I would, you probably need to go to, I think Thursday's probably the
Better day.
largest state, city councils meet Mondays. I don't think Mondays would work.
Okay. Other thoughts, other dates?
What is Thursday?
Yeah, I seem to remember, like, Sartell said they couldn't make it that night because they had a council.
Yeah, on Thursday?
Yeah, so we're gonna have a hard time getting there.
Yeah.
It's tough to find, so we're sure everyone, yeah.
But I know Mondays, a fair amount of townships meet on Mondays and Wednesdays.
Do we need to move into January?
I think we're gonna have to move into January, and maybe, maybe we should send it out to the cities and townships and say, what are the best days of the week for you guys, for, for everybody?
Okay.
I, I agree with that, and then I would ask them, let's just pick two dates.
Yeah.
For the year to do.
So, Monty, could we do that? Could we send a broad email out to cities and townships asking their best dates, and then bring it back to us on the twenty-first?
January.
Uh, December or January? See what their dates are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then we can go from there.
I think with the holidays, most people are gonna probably select January.
I would assume so.
Yeah.
But then we can move, if you can bring it back the twenty-first, and we'll just do our best to
Yep.
honor everybody's date.
Yeah.
Thank you.
December, January, okay. The only thing I have to, we have a couple things here.
We'll hold you to a couple only.
I understand there was a desire to expand the November fourteenth committee the whole topics to include the proposed River Heights housing facility. Discussion proposed River Heights housing facility to the November fourteenth. And that, the purpose of that, again, was initially to discuss public health organizational structure. So adding that to the November fourteenth.
That won't take very long.
Okay.
Yeah. You're invited to the MICA annual meeting that is going to occur Thursday, February first, in Winona County. I don't, maybe just get it on your schedules at this point. It was more of a save the date at this point.
February first.
Thursday to February first, Winona County. As we get more information, we'll let you get, if someone wanna go, you might wanna go down the night. Well, or maybe stay the night.
Stay the, the.
Late night getting home.
I would recommend that you, you stay the night of, because usually it doesn't get over till eight thirty, nine o'clock.
Is this kind of a legislative update?
Yeah, we try to invite local legislators from that area. There won't be, from our area or not.
We hosted that.
Yeah, we just hosted it.
Okay.
So just begin the same date, and we'll be in touch with more details and talk about hotels or what have.
We're talking, we're talking about it tomorrow at our MICA meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. I need to read in the record some things that were done since our last board meeting. Just again, so it's just in the record that we amended the November seventh committee the whole at the Spacey Discussion with GLT Architects. We, we also added the special meme of township board members from Wata, Langille, and Minden to talk about rural property junk laws. That's, that is actually, that's at one p.m. today, if you can make it, at Wata Town Hall, Wata Town Hall, one o'clock. And we just talked about the, the change in the November fourteenth, and that is it.
Wow. All right.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
I'm second.
Motion second to approve the cause as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried.